Hi sweet beautiful souls, this is Kamala with Breathwork with Kamala. And let's do another mini breathwork session. So this will go by really fast. So just do your best to breathe along with me. Each week it seems that a lot of things are changing in the world. And this is an incredible tool that'll help calm your nervous system. And another thing that it's gonna do for you, it's gonna help you sleep better at night. Also, have you, have any of you had any heaviness in your chest at all? Or been coughing a little bit more than usual? So this is gonna help to, if you're feeling congested, it's gonna help break it up. Um, I do have a box of tissues just in case, because I might be coughing some stuff up. I don't know if just because everyone in the world is talking about it, you know, all the stuff going on. Um, it's making me just feel a little phlegmy. Or maybe it's the box of cookies I ate last week when I was stressed out. And all the inflammation from sugar. Alright, so uh, couple suggestions. If you haven't done breathwork before, go to my YouTube, Breathe with Kamala, or I'm sorry, go to my YouTube, Breathwork with Kamala. And you'll find there's a breath, a free breathwork session on there. I'm wearing an orange shirt. And it would be great to start out with that and then in the next day or so, breathe along to this one. Um, okay. Another thing is for tonight, you can either breathe lying down, just get nice and comfy, or you can sit upright with me and just breathe along, breathe along with me. So uh, before we begin, now I know I just wanted to see how you guys were doing. Um, please let me know how you guys are doing and you know, we're, you're not alone. We're not alone. And um, today was a very interesting and kind of intense day. So I've been trying to do breathwork all day long and it just didn't happen. I definitely wanted to do a session on myself before we did this together. Because I'm probably gonna cry, but that's alright. So just wanna be as raw as possible, so then you can see uh, what happens when you start breathing and the body symptoms that come up to release. And it's very gentle and loving. So sip of water. Let's do this. So uh, before we begin, uh, if you'd like to say a prayer to the God of your understanding before we begin, if there's anything that you if there's anything that you need right now in your life, doesn't matter what it is, I would love for you to pray and call it in. With anything that's stressing you out right now. Family, friends, work, not working, whatever it might be, just take a, take a couple minutes to just check in with yourself. And what I want you to do is I want you to slowly start taking three deep slow breaths in and out, in and out through the nose or the mouth. And just by taking a few deep breaths, you can start to feel in the body where you have pain or where the stress might be. Like my back hip hurts. And my chest is tight and my stomach is tight. So wherever it is for you, wherever the body has a symptom, I want you to take three deeper breaths. Just breathe with me. Oh, tonight's gonna be a good one. And again. Alright. So whenever you're ready, you may close your eyes or leave your eyes open. You can watch me the whole time or just have me on speaker. And you're gonna relax your jaw open. We're gonna breathe in one breath. And breathe out. We breathe in. And breathe out. We breathe in. And breathe out. Just like that. You're doing great. Just keep it going with me. And now would be a good time to wiggle, adjust. We're just getting started. Make sure you're nice and comfy. Put pillows where you need pillows. And now we can start getting into this. We breathe in. We breathe out. We breathe in. We breathe out. And just do your best to breathe along with me. It doesn't have to be perfect. We hold our breath 80% of the time. We breathe in. We breathe out. So this is kind of a lot if you're making yourself breathe these big, deep, full breaths. The body's like, "Ah, I'm starting to get tingly. This sucks. I don't wanna breathe." Okay, so then we breathe in. And breathe out. And keep that breath going. We breathe in. And out. And no matter what's going on in your mind or in the body, just keep that breath going. And we're gonna keep that breath connected. Inhale, one, two, three. Exhale, two, one. We inhale, one, two, three. Exhale, two, one. Just like that. We breathe in, three seconds. Exhale, two. Breathe in, three seconds. Exhale, two. Eventually your body will start to relax into this. So be easy. There's a lot going on on the planet. So it may take, take a moment for the body to adjust and start to relax into this breathing pattern. We breathe in. And out. You're doing great by the way. This isn't easy to do. It does get easier though. If you need to, get a sip of water. And keep breathing while I speak. Wherever you have pain or tingling in the body, take three deeper breaths through that part of your body. We breathe in. We breathe out. We breathe in. We breathe out. Your body's gonna love you so much by the time we're done. You might be hating me right now, but I promise you're gonna love me by the time we're done. We breathe in. And breathe out. We breathe in. We breathe out. You're doing great. And I think it's time, we're just gonna adjust the breath just a little bit. Move, pop your arms, your legs, adjust, cough. Clear the throat out if you need to, grab some water. And now we're ready to rock it. Okay? And no matter what's going on in the body, just keep breathing with me. I promise it's the most powerful gift we have that's in us. Okay, so we breathe in. Out. Breathe in. Out. Breathe in. Out. And it doesn't matter where your breath goes, wherever the oxygen flows to, just keep sending your breath through that area. We breathe in. And out. In. In. Out. You can really start to feel where your body carries stress. And take three deep slow breaths through that area. Nothing bad's gonna happen. If you need to take 30 seconds off, take a break, grab some water. And then come back into it whenever you're ready. I've been doing breathwork for 12 years and it's hard for me to do this stuff, okay? It's not easy. But guess what? It's gonna get a whole lot easier. We breathe in. We breathe out. We breathe in. And out. In. Out. In. Keep breathing while I speak. And now the body may start to relax a little. No matter what's going on in your life, in the body, in the mind, no matter what your mind is saying, keep breathing through this. You're totally safe. You can totally do this. There's miracles that are coming through, but you gotta get to the end of this breathwork session with me. We're halfway done. We breathe in. And out. We breathe in. And out. Stay with me. Look into my eyes and breathe with me. You're doing great. No matter what's going on in your life, you're not alone. We're all in this together. Your fingers may be getting a little tingly at the moment. I'm starting to feel a little like, woo, I'm a little drugged. And we breathe in, take three deeper breaths through the sensations and exhale. Just keep blasting yourself with that oxygen. We're almost to the first part of your release. If you haven't released already. We breathe in. I always know when I start to get a little fidgety. And like, when I don't wanna breathe, I'm about to release. My body's oxygenated. The mucus in my chest is starting to unlock. I feel like I need to cough, but I haven't yet. Let's keep going. We breathe in. And out. And let's get real. Keep breathing while I speak. Let's go, let's get real with how we're really feeling right now. You know, some of us might not feel peace today. Some of us might have watched the news and it's kind of freaking you out. Okay, gotcha. Um, someone might have got another message from someone else, a friend of a friend. Might be in the hospital. Someone might have pissed you off today. Okay? So let's get real with the feelings. They're on their way out, that's the good thing. That's why we keep breathing through it. You're gonna feel so much better. We're almost done with this session. Can you believe it? Okay, so I want you to keep breathing along with me. As the oxygen is going down through the body and it's gonna help release, anytime you held your breath, anytime you got pissed off, anytime fear came in and you kind of lost yourself and gave your power away. No, no, no. That's what the breathing's for. The breathing's gonna help bring your power back into you. So with three deeper inhales, I want you to breathe all the way down into your toes. We breathe in. You can send it. You can almost feel the, the cells in your feet. Take two deeper breaths all the way down into your feet. Circle the breath around. Breathe in. And exhale. And the exhale's gonna be very soft. It's really important as you breathe in, it's exaggerated and soft exhale. We breathe in. Soft exhale. Breathe in, exaggerate. Soft exhale. Okay? Now we're starting to get into the session where you may start to feel things. Keep going with me. I promise you, you're gonna feel so much better. And you're gonna sleep way better tonight than you have been lately. We breathe in. And exhale. We breathe in. And exhale. Let's just breathe for a few minutes on our own. I feel, uh, yeah. I can feel stuff moving in the body, okay? And it's a really good reminder as you breathe, let your thoughts go wherever they go. Don't try to control this. Don't try to control your feelings. Don't try to control what you're seeing or feeling in the body. Just breathe. Let your thoughts get wild. Let it go there. If your thoughts are dark, let it go dark for a minute. Because we have to go through the darkness sometimes in order to see the light and appreciate what we have. So let your mind wander wherever it's visioning, wherever it's going, or the feelings. Let it get, let it get dark. Let it go there. Okay? I promise you, I'm right by your side. Nothing bad's gonna happen. You are safe and protected and God always has you. You are always safe, always protected. Okay? Again, back into the breathing. I'm gonna let you breathe for a few minutes on your own. I will stop talking. And I'm just gonna share real quick with you what came up for me. There's a process I'm gonna take you through in just a couple minutes. I just asked my body if the feelings or sensations could speak. What they're trying to say is, I did this internally. And it said, because my emotions are starting to come up from the breathing. And my emotion said, "How am I gonna handle all this? Am I gonna handle all the emotions, all the feelings that come through with each day? Friends, family, media, people that I loved, loved ones, friends of friends, how am I gonna handle all this energy that's going on on the planet? How am I gonna handle this?" So that's why we're breathing right now. It's gonna pass. Because it's not my responsibility to handle this. It's my responsibility to breathe and to share the gift of breathing. So we breathe in. And out. In. And out. Keep breathing along. I'm gonna take you through this process too. We breathe in. And out. We breathe in. And out. And it's safe to feel whatever you're feeling. It's on their way out. They're just feelings. Alright, let's warrior through this. It's your turn now. So alright, take three deep breaths down through your body. Wherever you have tingling, sensations, pain, if it's heavy, whatever's going on right now with you. I love you. It's gonna be okay. Okay. Again, take a few more deep breaths down through the body. And I want you to repeat after me. Look into my eyes. Repeat after me. But keep breathing also, okay? And say this after me. "If the feelings or sensations in my body could speak, what it's trying to say is, and what's the first thing that comes to you?" And it's okay, because we're gonna do this process a couple times over. So during this process, I want you to be, it could be on it, it could be dark, it could be positive or loving. Just let yourself feel what's really going on in there. And you might get the same answer, or you may not even get an answer. Keep breathing through this. Okay, take three depth, three deeper breaths with me. You're doing great by the way. Okay, so feel the sensations, feel the feelings right now in your body and repeat after me. "If the feelings or sensations in my body could speak, what they're really trying to say is, and say the first thing that comes to you." Breathe with me. I'm shocked I haven't had any phlegm release yet from my chest. That might happen later, later tonight though. Okay, so I have another process for you. Keep breathing while I speak. And there's something that we're all learning from this, what's going on in the world. There's some, there's a gift in every single day. So let's ask the body another question. Take three deep breaths down through the body. With me. You're doing great. And really feel in the body. Again, take three more deeper breaths. Breathe through the area. If there's pain or tingling or whatever's going on, breathe through. See if you can expand it like a balloon. Actually, I want you to take another few deeper breaths. Expand that area, whether it's your fingertips, shoulders, your throat, your ears, whatever's, whatever's happening with you. Could be anything, anxiety. Expand it with that oxygen like a balloon, because it's, what's happening is it's helping to release that shit that doesn't need to be inside of you. Okay. Repeat after me. "If the feelings or sensations in my body could speak, what it's trying to show me is, and say the first thing that comes to you." And get it out. Get it all out of your body. And keep breathing. And I'm gonna do this process on myself. I wanna see what's going on inside of me right now. Keep breathing while I speak. "If the feelings or sensations in my body could speak, what it wants me to know is that I'm gonna be okay. That I'm good enough to make it, that I'm strong enough to make it." Honor my feelings. Let the feelings pass through. Keep going. That's uh, something that came up for me. Okay. So let's just breathe for a few more minutes. We've already been breathing for almost 30 minutes. Can you believe it? It goes by so fast. Alrighty. Breathe along with me. I just love so many people. I'm just grateful for all the people in my life. And I miss my friends. I miss being able to go to sea and hug my friends and go get coffee and just hang out and I just miss it so much. But I'm not lonely. I feel like so many people are going through this right now. These are the emotions that are coming up within me. But hey, at least we have our phones at the moment. We can FaceTime, we can Snapchat, we can whatever it is, you can reach out and call the people that you love. And just tell them how much you miss them. I just I love so many people. I would not be here today if it wasn't for the people that love me and that I love. I wouldn't be making this video. I'm so grateful. I'm so grateful. No matter what's coming up for you, just keep breathing through it. Let the emotions, let the tears come out, if you're feeling tears. Okay, beautiful souls. I want you to ask yourself one more question before we close. You're doing amazing, by the way. And I gotta say, last week's breathe, last week's breathwork session that I put out. I released so much crap in my body, I mean, my tummy, I could. My tummy was so tight and that's where I do hold a lot of energy, energy when I'm stressed. My stomach was so tight, I had to lay down last week when we breathed for twenty-five minutes. And this week, we breathed for almost thirty. And I'm totally sitting up, I'm way stronger, I didn't cry as much this week. I might cry later, which is fine. Okay, so, which is amazing, so keep breathing to these Youtubes. Keep breathing, keep going with it, because I'm really amazed how much more strength I have. From last week. Um, it was, I don't even know how I got through that, uh. That download, the, uh, the YouTube. Okay, so before we close, sweet souls. I love you, let's do one more process. My ears just popped like so hard. Okay, take three deeper breaths down through the body, wherever you have feelings or sensations right now. Just know you're safe and protected. It's all gonna be okay. Breathe with me. Let's ask your body another question. That's it. Okay. Okay, alright, you ready? Repeat after me. And breathe in first. Repeat after me. If the feelings or sensations in my body could speak. What they need to let go of is. And get it out, speak the first thing that comes to you. And trust yourself. And one more question. Take a few deep breaths down through the body, repeat after me. What I really, really need to let go of is. Mine said the fear, you just need to let go of the fear. You need to let go of the chaos. Sometimes, uh, I can feed off, uh. The drama and the chaos and it's. Since I'm so strong, if I'm, I'm a really, I feel like I'm a really strong person. When I'm strong, I'm strong, when I feel weak, I let myself be weak. But right now. What I really need to let go of is, for me, is, uh. Well, I just need to, I need to surrender. I don't, I don't, I don't always have to be the powerful one, I don't always have to be the strong one. Wow, that just came through. But, uh. But I don't need to feed into the fear. What I really need to let go of is. Just the chaos. I can be in my strength, I can be in my power, so. Let's breathe for one more minute. Because. Whenever we feel good, and then that moment when like, someone comes around and says something and then we totally feel like shit. That's when we give our power away. So like, when I watched something earlier and it scared me. Boom, I gave all control and power away. So let's take the last minute to pull your power back into you. I want you to. Breathe with me and bring it back into you, bring it back into your center. We are not giving our power away through this time. We are staying grounded and in our power and in our heart. It's a very important message. To not give our power away. You know, God, God's in us. Right? So. Why would we give that away? We keep our power in here for us. And it may take time, I mean, it's taken me years to get to this place where I, where I'm even at. So I used to be really weak. And, uh, anyway, okay. Okay, just, uh, three last breaths and then you, then you're all done, sweet souls. And one last deep breath, blow your whole body up like a balloon. You are done. Go back to your regular breath. Take a few minutes for yourself. Dang, that was good. I feel so much better than I did thirty minutes ago. Let me tell you what. One more question, one more question. I will let go when. I will let go when. And say whatever comes through. Okay, and before we close for this evening, or today, wherever you might be. Notice the sensations in the body. I didn't have this lump here thirty minutes ago. There might be a good cry in there. But, um. Just take, take a good, uh, take some time to come out of this. It's not easy to breathe like this. You know what, since we're here, I'm gonna process this lump in my throat. And the more that you do this, and the more you breathe to these, uh, this channel. And the more you, um, hear me practice this. The better you're gonna get at processing your emotions in the moment, no matter where you are, you'll be able to take a deep breath in. And speak it out, so. I wanna show, I wanna share this with you, okay? Let me check in with myself here real quick. And here's how I'm gonna say it, I'm gonna describe the sensation. It's a lump. Okay. And I'm gonna ask myself. If the lump in my neck could speak. What it's trying to say is. I can't speak. I'm not supposed to speak up. Okay? I had something earlier happen today with my family and, uh. All I gotta say is, you know, it's safe for me to speak up. So, this is, uh, let me check in with it again. If this lump in my neck could speak. What it's really trying to say is. I need to forgive my family. They don't know any better. Now, it's, the sensation the body, in the body, it's either gonna get more, or it's gonna get less, or it's gonna stay the same. So actually, that lump has gotten about forty percent smaller. And what this lump is trying to show me is. Just don't be so hard. Just don't be so hard, you don't have to push so hard. Just be soft. It's okay, forgive. Yeah, okay. I can swallow now. Uh, I've been doing that for a long time now, so I can, I can release pretty quickly. But, um. And also, the body could also release a little more later. So, the body's gonna do whatever it does. So, after tonight, just be really gentle on yourself. A woman messaged me and she let me know that. Her ears were stuffed after the breathing, so. I sent her a quick message, I said, okay, do it again, cause sometimes the breathing. There's so much emotion and there's so much we don't speak, and a lot of us don't speak our truth. And these are crazy times right now, and so. The breathing is gonna bring stuff up to the surface to come out. Very, very loving and gently. So. Okay, anyway. I meant to make this a shorter video, sorry it's so long. I love you guys, again, this is Kamala. If you'd like to book a private breathwork session with me over the phone. Um, I do phone sessions daily. And my website is www.breathewithkamala.com. And you can, uh, direct message me. Send me messages, let me know how you're doing, let me know how this breathe was for you. If anything different came up from last week's breathwork session. I also have something, if you're not able to do a private breathwork session. I went into the studio and I made this incredible hour-long. And as you can see, I still have more stuff coming up, and you might be having more stuff come, come up too. And that's why you wanna breathe a full hour. Um, you, this type of breathwork, you wanna breathe a full hour, cause it really gets, it just lets go so much. And makes you feel even better than you might alre- already be feeling now. So again, on my website, there's a one-hour breathwork download. And it's a full guided breathwork session. And you, it's thirty-three dollars and you can listen to it anytime, you can have it for the rest of your life. And anytime you feel stressed, put on that download and breathe to it and it's gonna give you, it's gonna give you exactly what you need. And, um, it'll, it'll keep you breathing better, you're gonna notice. Every time you hold your breath, you're gonna notice when you're just lying down, going to bed, you're gonna get into that circular breathing pattern. Okay, I think that's all. You guys did amazing, I'm so proud of you, this was not easy, this not easy work to do, and, um. Uh, stay safe out there. And just know that you're not alone and you are loved and supported, it's safe to let go of fear. And I think that's it, I don't need to say anything else, okay? Love you guys, bye.